Music is coming up next. Western Washington's sunny and dry.
This chair is not good. I didn't know she would come.
Okay. I would like to call to order the August 24th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and begin with, oh, I'm reading the minutes. Pardon me. All right, thank you. I will restart over again here. I would like to call together the Wednesday, September 14th, 2016, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And before we start with the approval of the minutes, I just wanted to mention that item, we have a few agenda changes. One is the cancellation of the present transportation plan, multimodal transportation plan presentation by Les McDonald. He was called away for a family emergency, so we will reschedule that at some point during the meeting, suggest dates. So if anybody was listening for that piece, it will not happen tonight. And with that, we had a shared readings discussion that was targeting that presentation, so we'll also defer that. Okay, so I'd like to begin with approval of the minutes of August 24th. There's the right date, okay.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, one second, yes.
I do have a question. On page three, number three, there's nothing in there about governmental action that has impeded the activity, which is in number four on page two. And is it possible that that could happen to someone? And if it's legitimate for, for a structure, then wouldn't it be legitimate for the use? Or did I just not read it correctly?
Oh, you're talking to me?
No, to Mike. Mike, maybe you could address that, please.
Does that make, does the question make sense?
It does. So, the questions pertaining to why we didn't carry over the governmental action, ceasing a nonconforming use to exist. You know, we could certainly take a look at it. I think the, maybe the issue I have is, we don't really have any nonconforming uses out there. You know, there's usually some type of nonconforming use in a structure. So, you know, my, I guess, thought would maybe just to be, to leave it alone, but we could certainly go, I mean, we've got maybe a time or two to take a look at it, so I could go back and take, you know, look at it.
It just seemed like if it was legitimate in one set of circumstances, then why wouldn't it be legitimate to make that exception? And, but maybe I'm not reading it right, because one of us is, the one on page two, it's about for nonconforming uses and structures in combination, but then on page three, it's simply for the uses. Am I, am I, maybe I'm missing something mental.
Yeah, and it's more of just an action by the local government. You know, there's a, if you read that number subsection four, talks about how it's discontinued or abandoned for a series of consecutive months, so maybe it's in poor shape and has to be boarded up and worked on before public can access it again. Well, that would be, you know, an action of the building official in order to, to say that that's a public nuisance or a public...
But a use wouldn't necessarily imply that there's anything wrong with the structure, right? That link on page three, that would imply that the use is not conforming, but what if somebody were prohibited in, in carrying on whatever it was the use was, more than 30 days, not due to any reason of their own, but because some government agency, who knows what, for some reason stopped them from doing it for more than 30 days? Does that make sense? I don't know why that popped up to me.
Yeah, it does, but I don't know that the, the use would, I mean, they could stop them operating, but the use would still be on the property, to me.
If they weren't doing it, I guess the, I don't know. I just, I could, I was trying to imagine, well, what could you be doing that's not conforming, and somehow a government agency stopped you from doing it for more than 30 days, and now you can't do it anymore because it's more than 30 days? I don't...
Well, it's a pretty simple sentence, I could just insert that there. It wouldn't be a big deal.
I might be just totally crazy, but that's...
Well, I think there's probably some circumstances where it would apply.
Just never know what might befall someone, I guess.
Okay. Any other additions, corrections, or deletions? I think we heard a motion in a second, is that correct? Is that where we are? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Propose? Okay, abstentions? All right, minutes carried. Next, correspondence. Is there any correspondence from staff or anyone else?
Well, the only thing that I have is maybe pertaining to Les's future presentation for the multimodal transportation plan, and then just meeting availability. And we can save that till the end of the meeting, or talk about it now?
It might be useful to determine it now, if we can.
Okay. Well, I have, October 12th, I think, is our first meeting in October. I'm gonna be down in Boise, attending American Planning Association Conference, the Idaho chapter, so I'll be down, I'll miss that meeting. We could certainly have Bill come and attend as the staff representative. I don't think we have really anything pressing, except maybe the nonconforming section, the nonconforming ordinance, which can be put off for a public hearing at the next meeting, if you'd like.
So you're talking about the 26th, potentially, for...
For Les to come.
Or if Les came, and all we did was focus on the presentation and shared readings, asking him questions for that particular meeting, would that be something?
Yeah, that could work, too, so if...
But you might want to be present, you know, it's, it's...
Yeah, I could always go back and look at the recording, if that happened. So if it worked, you know, if it worked the best for everybody to make the October 12th meeting, then I certainly could maybe have Bill here, if it worked better.
I think I just remembered Nels has a conflict, then, yeah.
I, I'm out of town. I would really like to share in that meeting with Les, so I happen to be taking a University of Idaho field trip to New York City, and gonna be in New York on that day, but if we could have it on a later date, I would, I would really love to...
On the 26th? I will not be here for the next meeting, and I would really like to be part of this, because I think I'm one of the people who initiated having him come to begin with, so...
So what date are you thinking?
So I'm, well, that really leaves us at the end of October, that would leave...
That 26th?
26th, if that works for other people, I don't know.
Is that good for you, Michael?
Yeah, so you'll be...
Joel has a question.
I'm actually going to be in Vietnam on the 12th and the 26th.
Oh, okay. Well, we, we could be looking at November, which would be November 9th. How does...
I expect to be here.
How about everybody else? Is that, I think...
I may not be here on the 9th, but we'll be pushing this to Christmas if we're...
Well, we start to, we probably won't have a meeting on the 23rd, would be my guess, since it's the day before Thanksgiving, so, what's your preference?
I certainly would, at least, my life says the 9th is good, so I don't know. It's pretty important. I think it's a, it's a 500-page document that I don't think any of us have read very well, and I think the more we can talk about it, the better off we'd be.
So if we put it off till the, to the 9th, that means everybody will have read the 500-page document? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Or at least a couple chapters of it?
I'm not promising that, but...
A hard copy, if you want to borrow a hard copy instead of reading it online. It's in my car.
I'm finding it unpleasant to read online, it, when you try and page back to the next chapter and stuff, then you're rolling it, and da-da-da-da. I suppose young people would like it better than I do, but I'm not enjoying it that much.
Would you like to borrow my copy, and then maybe you could pass it on to...
I would like to.
I'll give it to you when we leave.
All right, since Gregory said that it was tentative that he couldn't make it on the 9th, and everybody else had dates that they absolutely couldn't, is it all right if we schedule it for the 9th?
That'd be fine, I can plan around that.
Okay. And then we'll see if Les McDonald also goes with his schedule. So we should maybe have a second backup date, possibly, I don't know. And maybe, maybe we then have to do the 26th, if that's a, well, Joel, you're a member of the Transportation Commission, though, so that becomes really important, too. So, hmm, okay, well, why don't we just see if the 9th works, and we'll go from there?
We'll confirm with an email.
Okay, yeah. All right. So that moves, is there any other correspondence?
No.
Nope? Okay. I guess the other question, though, is, since you won't be here October 12th, should we have a meeting, is, you know, should we continue and have a meeting, since we won't be discussing his presentation that day? And will there be enough of an agenda to have an October 12th meeting? What do you think? What's your recommendation?
Right now, it would probably just be the nonconformities section, so we could certainly cancel that meeting.
Okay, and then just handle it on the 26th, then? Okay. All right, so there's nothing really big out there right now. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the Transportation Commission meeting report by Joel Hamilton.
So which one are we canceling?
Oh, we're cancelling the 12th, the next, our next meeting.
A lot of effort.
That gives you time...
No, no, we're two meetings out, I'm sorry. October 12th.
And then everybody, is everybody reading the multimodal before Les's presentation? Is that what you're hoping to do?
Well, the idea was for them to read the land use section, which is on, under the shared readings, and that we were actually supposed to do for today, class. So, we can read more of it, possibly, if there are other pertinent sections, but I certainly had a lot of questions after reading the land use section, myself.
That was only 11 pages.
Yeah, and it was short, but if you take a look at, well, just look at project, where projected growth is, and look at where projected arteries to get that growth to the west side of Moscow with, you know, and, and what is the idea? I had a hard time finding out what it was. I mean, you know...
And then comparing that to the comprehensive plan.
Right. So I think there's, I think there are a lot of issues, and it's, it's good, good material to, to take a look at, and it's more probably, are there other sections that you particularly recommend, if people get ambitious and go beyond the land use section?
It's always the first few that are, I think, are the most important.
First few chapters?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, that would be good. Thank you. All right, so, then, any other, let's see, we were on the Transportation Commission meeting report, and do you have anything to tell us?
No, the Transportation Commission has not met for a little while, and our next scheduled meeting is on the 22nd, which is a week from tomorrow.
Okay.
Four to six in this room, and I have not yet seen an agenda.
So you'll be leading the next P&amp;Z meeting on the 26th, though you can bring us up to date with that?
Yeah, I expect to be.
Yeah, because I will be out of town for that meeting. All right, so the next item on the agenda is open microphone. I will note, there is no one in the audience at the present time, but just to reiterate that it's an opportunity for members of the public to come and speak to the commission about matters that are not on our agenda, when we're currently pending, before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we welcome you to come attend a future meeting. And now we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the public hearing on the Planned Unit Development Amendment Ordinance. Mike is gonna present first, and, go from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So before you tonight, we have the ordinance that we were working on over the last couple months regarding amendments to PUD criteria. This is the current section that we have for minor and major amendments to planned unit developments. So we go through just the first initial steps into a minor PUD amendment, discussing that the, the body that has jurisdiction of the original PUD may approve such requests without a public hearing, if it's deemed a minor amendment. It has some criteria that it must meet in order to be deemed a minor amendment, and that was some of the criteria that we were looking at, relaxing a little bit and combining some of the redundant language. And then it goes on to list, if you don't meet that minor amendment criteria, then you're automatically put into the major amendment bracket, and you have to go through pretty much the beginning of the entire process. And so this was the, the ordinance that's in your packet, that we have changes to, so we've changed the structure a little bit to include the minor amendment section at the beginning, which discusses having it being approved administratively by the zoning administrator, if it meets, or if it doesn't meet the major amendment criteria. And so it carries over some of the same language that, or the submittal requirements for the PUD, and then, at the end, it gives a little bit of flexibility to the zoning administrator to put that in the major amendment category, if it's deemed to be kind of a significant, you know, maybe it, it doesn't meet the major impact criteria, but maybe the zoning administrator deems it to be a major impact. And so it just gives a little bit of flexibility at the end of that section, in order for staff to make an administrative decision on whether or not, you know, that would be, maybe a detriment to the planned unit development, if we were just to approve it. And then we have the major amendment, so we've shifted this, it used to have the, the minor amendment criteria, we've shifted it to the major amendment criteria that you need to, to meet, to be in, in order to be deemed a major amendment. I think it, you know, works a little bit better that way, instead of the oddity of having, you know, if it, if it doesn't meet one of those criteria, then you're a major amendment. So I think it reads a little bit better in the, in the language. We had worked on this section for the, the major amendment, discussing that if it's a type 1 PUD, it's just gonna be one public hearing before Planning and Zoning Commission. If it's a type 2 PUD amendment, then it should, you know, have one public hearing before Planning and Zoning, who will forward a recommendation on to city council, and then city council will conduct one public hearing to approve, prove the conditions or deny that amendment request. And then we go through what those criteria are. We've consolidated quite a few of those, so I think we went from maybe 12 criteria in the, or 11 criteria in the beginning, now we're down to just seven. So we've consolidated a few of those redundant criteria, relaxed the percentages a little bit. We stuck with, I think it was 5% in the beginning, we went, they had 1% for the dwelling unit count, and we just set that at a standard 5%. And then had a criteria there for not exceeding the residential density, had the portion about ratio of number of dwelling units, and then specified what those actually were, you know, single-family, detached, twin homes, townhouses, multifamily, because, you know, that could be construed as, really, twin homes are two single-family dwellings. So you could go from, you know, single-family detached to twin homes, and technically it'd still be single-family dwellings we're talking about. So just wanted to clarify that. And then a lot of this comes down to the, really, the change of the theme of the, the PUD. So we've got the, the language in there that we just carried over, that discusses the character, you know, bulk clustering of buildings, visual impact of the development, and then major, you know, locations of sidewalks, streets, lots, things of that nature. And then environmental impact, as long as it doesn't substantially change that, we'd carry that over from the previous language, substantially alter the, the timing of phasing, and then wanted to include a criteria about any density bonuses that may be awarded as part of the original PUD, just to make sure that none of those were negated when we went through this process. So with that, my recommendation is that you conduct a public hearing and consider any relevant public testimony, and then forward a recommendation of approval on the city council. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, we'll start with that inside the commission. Any questions? Comments? Okay. All right, thank you, Mike. Okay, at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing, however, there is no one from the public present, so with that, we will close the public hearing and have a deliberation among the commissioners. Does anybody have any comments, one way or the other?
The one question I had, and I don't think we remembered to ask this last time, does this solve the problem that we were originally addressing this for?
Excellent question.
Well, it doesn't necessarily solve the problem for Brenda, for Ms. Von Wodruska. You know, when we had looked at it, there really wasn't a way to craft an ordinance amendment that would allow her to do what she wanted to do, without adversely affecting maybe another PUD within the city. And so, you know, after we had gone through and maybe tried to craft it such that it would alleviate her concerns, we realized that, yeah, it was gonna be an issue for maybe some of the other PUDs. What it does do is, she would be in the, you know, just because of the smaller scale of that development, she's not gonna meet the 5% threshold, so she's gonna be over that, even if she wants to convert one of those units, you know, that's, with, with the whole development being, you know, like 10 to 12 units, then when you convert one of those over to, one office over to residential, then automatically it's gonna be, you know, 10, 12%. And, but, but what this does is, since she's gonna be a major amendment, which she would be if we, she went through the process right now, all she would have to do is just go to one public hearing before the commission, and the commission could grant the approval of that. And so, in my mind, that would be a, you know, a win-win for her, instead of having to go all the way through three, four months of neighborhood meeting, preliminary PUD before the commission, and then go to final PUD before the commission. You know, through all those steps, it's gonna take her about three months to, to go through, whereas we just noticed it for a public hearing, you know, a 15-day notice requirement, and then we could get her before the commission within a month, and then the commission could give final approval that night. And so it's similar to the process we currently have for minor amendments, where it just goes to the commission, and there's no public hearing, and the commission just reviews that at one meeting. In this case, we would just have a public hearing, so open it up to the public, and everybody within 600 feet would be noticed, but she'd still get it accomplished at one meeting. She would just have to wait the 15-day notice period before we could get it on the commission agenda, whereas, right now, we could just put it on the next agenda without the notice period. So I guess it doesn't get her exactly what she wanted in the beginning, but it gets her pretty close to that, just, you know, through, through the major amendment process.
It sounds like it greatly streamlines the process for her.
It does, and, I mean, you know, for any PUD, if it goes into the major amendment category, there's really no re, I mean, the, most of these have already been built, and maybe they're winding down, and there's a few more houses to be built in them, and there's really no reason why you should have to go through a neighborhood meeting to introduce, you know, the neighborhood meeting's really to introduce the project to the public, and to meet with them and answer questions. There's really no reason to go through that at this stage, and there's no reason to go through multiple hearings, when, you know, it's already been fleshed out by the commission or the council, and they're already familiar with it, so.
Okay. Yep, yeah. I feel like I remember that we talked about, even though it changed the residential component a great deal, that was like a lowering of the intensity of the use, as opposed to having business in there? So when you said you were looking at other PUDs that are currently out there, and it seemed like this worked well, well for the circumstances that they were in, could, could you kind of describe what that, what that looked like to you? That, that this was a good way to deal with what other, because every PUD's not the same, obviously?
Yeah, I mean, we...
Yes, I'd just like to understand how it fits in with other ones. I mean, this makes sense to me, but...
Yeah. Well, it, you know, those ones, if it fits in with other ones, the majority of the PUDs we have are residential, you know, not, not very many of them have some mixed-use component associated with them, and we've done a couple recently, the Silos was one, Identity on Main that we reviewed a couple months ago, that, that's a component that has commercial in it, so it's mixed-use. But the majority of the ones that we see are more smaller lots, you know, Tempo Commons, Green Acres, Greenside, Zale on Paul Street.
They're all just residential?
They're all residential development.
Okay.
And so those are the majority of the ones, you know, the, think about the minor amendments that we've done over the years, a lot of them have just been more or less maybe a reduction in setbacks for one challenging lot, just because of the lot sizes and the development. You know, the one in green size was right next to the detention pond, and there was gonna be really no adverse effect to the neighbors on that one, and, you know, that, so that'll put that over into the minor amendment category, and with this change, staff would just review that administratively, and, you know, and we'd be on our way, instead of having to bother the commission with something that minor. And we had a Camden Court one, that was same thing, setback requirements and orientation of the, the building. So a lot of those things, I think that'll be, you know, it'll, it'll help the commission out, it'll help us out, and help the public out by not, you know, wasting everybody's time to do something that simple. And then when it gets into the higher category, I think that, you know, the, the major amendment, it does still allow some flexibility to maybe alter the housing types, you know, 10% s, right? You know, maybe there's a 50-unit PUD, which is pretty common size. Well, it means that you've got, you know, three, four units that you could maybe alter the, the, the housing type, you know, as long as it doesn't substantially change the character of the development, you know, it's something they'd be up against as well. So I think that, you know, but in the end, if it does fall into the major category, then we're just looking at, you know, one, possibly two, public hearings, depending upon if it was associated with a subdivision or not. So, you know, I think that, for, for everybody's sake, I think it, it does a service to, for everybody's time, and, and going through that process, so.
Okay.
Wendy, I, I just, I conveniently missed the meeting with the applicant that brought this up, but I've often thought that the 5 and 10% is a little bit tight. I don't know why, I just, even though it just seems like a 5% is a, a pretty small thing, if you, you almost need some examples of PUDs, I don't have a big problem with what we're doing here, but it almost seems a little nitpicky. I almost wish it was 10 and 15% on the, on the amount of change, you know, because it, I don't think I want to get in the way of, of going ahead with it, but I just, that...
It's hard to understand scale, is, I think I'm, what I'm hearing, is each one, yeah?
And, and, you know, I suppose the only way to check that out is to try and pick three or four public, or PUDs that we've seen in the past, and then look at what would happen if it changed 5% or 10%, and, and see whether we thought that was a significant enough thing, because, and I'm a, I'm a government guy, but on the other hand, it seems like that 5 and 10% gets a little bit picky, and almost seems like over, just over, being maybe over careful. And that starts to get people complaining about the fact that, my gosh, you can hardly move without getting somebody to approve something. So I just want to bring that up, and I don't think it's a big enough issue to, to, I don't want to call a vote or something, but if you see what I'm saying, I'd like at least all of us to consider those issues as we look at our ordinances, to see if we kind of overkill on trying to pick every size in wall and, and window, as opposed to the most, the important things, it would be life, safety kinds of issues. So that's just my, a little speech I wanted to make.
Well, if we were looking at a what-if on Identity on Main, let's say, since that's familiar to most of us in recent months, what would be the trigger to put it into the major category? What types of changes would they come back with, potentially, I'm not saying they are, but necessarily at all, but, you know, it's, if we could put that into kind of numbers of understanding, like, you know, if they add X number of square feet of commercial space, then it triggers it, or, is that one whole more retail outlet, or, you know, what, or if they put in one more apartment building, or, you know, I, and I know I'm asking this off the top of my head, and off the top of yours, so I'm not gonna, but that, that might offer some perspective, because we kind of see where the thresholds are, the trigger.
Yeah, I mean, it, if we're looking at Identity on Main, you know, 5% of the commercial, so they have, what, 3,000 square feet? So we'd be looking at more than 5% of that, so what's that, 150 square feet?
Yeah, nothing.
Pretty small.
Oh, it's pretty small, yeah. I mean, it, you know, that, that's intended for, you know, some made, or some minor deviation from, you know, maybe they have to, they didn't, they need to add sprinklers, where they didn't think they needed to, you know, it's a fire riser room, or, you know, some type of storage room that, you know, and I, I think about... I, I think about, you know, maybe the Silos project, that, you know, a lot of these projects are pretty, pretty well set and pretty well defined. There's not a whole lot of extra room where they can do things. And, but, you know, 5% is what we, what we had before, and, you know, I, I wouldn't be too concerned if we raised that, but then again, we would just be looking at, you know, if they wanted to, to add something like that that exceeded 5%, then they would just be coming back to the commission for one hearing, you know, one meeting, and maybe you would want to take a look at that.
And it's hard to arbitrarily say, well, it should be 10% or 20%, or, you know, because it really, I think, when we had the discussion, it was, before, it was really, well, it really depends on, on the PUD itself, and, and there's such a spectrum of them.
If you think about your, your own, you're building a house, or building something, most of us, when we get into those projects, find ourselves realizing we didn't quite know what we were planning to do, and now we wanted to adjust something, and contractors always complain about the fact that, well, almost every owner wants to make some changes. And, and all I'm, I guess my point is that if you said you're changing to 20%, that looks like a, kind of a, a bite, but this picky 10, 5 and 10%, and it seems to be just saying, don't, you don't get to change anything on your, you're supposed to be really smart and do a, a PUD that you really understand, and don't be thinking about making any changes because we've got you covered.
Well, we also had talked about giving more discretion to the planning administrator, but there was also an expressed desire to maybe have the opportunity to go through planning and zoning and, and run one, one round through to, to not feel like there was pressure to make an, you know, a sort of autonomous decision.
Yeah, I mean, the majority of the projects that this is going to affect are the Identity on Main, the Silo, Brenda's Silos project, that are really defined. I mean, anytime you go through one of these residential PUDs, they typically have general floor plans that people don't really have to adhere to. They've got architectural style, you know, sample elevations, and so, we're not looking at an approved floor plan, or, you know, we're mainly looking at whether or not what they submit meets the intent of what they had portrayed during the public hearings. So, when they have, you know, those sample elevations, maybe it's cra- they're all craftsman style, and they all have, you know, maybe gabled roofs, and, and so, you know, there's some of those architectural features that they have to define, that's what we check on. If it's a little bit larger than what they have, then, you know, as long as it meets setbacks, really, the setbacks are what define how large you can go, as well as building height, you know, most of them are maybe story and a half, two stories, they have these setbacks, and most of them are built to the setbacks, and they meet the two-story building height for, you know, wherever they're located. And as long as they meet the architectural style, if they can pick up some extra square footage here or there, and they put a wall, you know, they have five bedrooms instead of four, you know, none of that stuff really matters to us, as long as it still fits in with the theme of the planned unit development, and so-
So, you're saying that would mean-
It's not to say that this isn't really going to affect a lot of those residential ones, it's just going to affect the ones that are more or less set in stone for a building footprint, like Identity and like the Silos, which are mainly are only two. Anytime Fitness, I guess, would be another one where they added apartments above, but I don't know that they'd have to go back through a PUD, because we now allow that within a, that zone to have residential above, so that's just my right now, so.
So, what do you want to do? Did you want to propose going, making a change, or just leaving it?
I don't think so. I just, I'd like to, I feel like I should have made this little speech a few weeks ago, and, and so I really don't want to do it now, and I, I just, comes to me now as I look at it, and I, I just want to make us aware, as we look at, at improving our ordinances, that we don't get so detailed, act like, it, it just seems slightly odious to me, but I, I think I'm ready to go, I'm ready to go for it.
Yeah.
Joel?
I would, I, I very much like the, the simplification of the procedures, making the minor PUD process much less odious. In a sense, that reduces the importance of, your objection, Nels, because it's, it's, it's less a heroic procedure to actually enter into a minor PUD amendment. And I, I definitely support the simplification of the, of the standards, the triggers. So, I guess I would, I would support approving what we have now, and we can revisit it again if the 5% proves to be a, a problem.
Other comments?
Well, anybody who, coming from the background of the construction world, anyone who's thought through an application for a PUD to begin with, has got a pretty good idea of what they want to create, and they're selling us on the idea of whether this is a good idea or not a good idea, and that it's meeting all the criteria. So, to make a change in it, I mean, I see what Nels is saying, but you're selling an idea, and if you want to change the idea, then maybe you have to be willing to go through the effort that it takes to sell the change of the idea, because people have agreed, they've come to a public hearing already and said, okay, we're all right with this, and we've agreed to it, and city council has agreed to it, so I guess I'm not so, so convinced that that is a big burden, that 5%. A good idea is a good idea, and if you're changing it, then maybe it's not the same idea anymore.
Yeah, I guess, I feel like it's not such a bad thing to have a second look that's pretty streamlined, and, but it provides an opportunity to see if the intent-
It is still there, yeah.
-has been modified significantly enough to, to, you know, have a discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think what this does is it gives the zoning administrator a lot more ability to approve things. It gives, it makes the, the major amendment much easier, much more simplified, and so with those two things happening, I think, I agree with you, it's good that if you're going to change it quite a bit, or even not quite a bit, if you're going to change it 5%, it's worth taking that second look. And it's not, like I say, the big improvement is it's not a four-month process to take that second look, it's a one-month process. So, I think, I think with all of that involved, that, that the triggers for, for having P and Z look at it are just fine. And I would just send a word out to the citizenry that this does give the Planning and Zoning Commission more authority than current, than we currently have in, in PUD changes, and it does give the zoning administrator more authority than they have in doing minor changes. And so, I think the, it's incumbent on, on the population to keep an eye on this stuff, and if there's changes to a PUD that you don't like, you should be sure and show up to the hearing, and just be aware of these things.
A PUD is already a quest to do something out of the ordinary.
Yeah.
So, maybe 5% could be a huge difference in what everyone thought it was going to be like.
Yeah.
So, it, all, again, it comes down to scale, and, and, you know, I could see, if the intent is to have a mixed-use development, all of a sudden you take away 5% of, it could be a huge amount of commercial, you know, it just, it's hard to foresee it, not likely, but, but anyway, Joel, you had your hand up?
Uh, I was ready to make a motion. Further comments?
Dennis, did you have a?
I, I, I moved that we, I, I guess we, it's a recommendation to, to council, that we recommend to council the, the approval of the, uh, proposed ordinances presented to us.
Second.
Second by deputing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, PUD varies, ordinance varies, I should say. And now we come to the multimodal transportation plan presentation. Oh, no, we don't. I am having trouble with the agenda tonight. I apologize. The non-conformities draft ordinance.
I just remember some of our PUD kind of subdivisions where, you know, you go this out on the market, and then it doesn't sell, and you want to make some, a few changes, you decide, no, let's do duplexes.
All right, this is picking up where we left off last time, talking about the non-conformity section of the zoning code. So, we were on non-conforming structures, we had gone through the proposed changes, there was a, a question as to whether or not we still needed the 70% of the replacement cost, which we kind of discussed and, and worked through, and decided that we don't need that anymore, since we're going to allow the reconstruction of the non-conformities, should they be, you know, burnt down, destroyed, at no fault of the owner. So, that's what I've done in number two there, discuss the, should the non-conforming structure, non-conforming portion of the structure be destroyed by no fault of the owner? It may be reconstructed, having the same zoning non-conformities, but no more than as existed before the damage occurred. So, we've made that change to that section, and then this one, we had, had decided to, to leave alone, and then decided to add this section at the very end. So, I think I had added on number one, we had discussed last time the, the opportunity for maybe a conditional use permit, so if you had a non-conforming structure, maybe it didn't meet the, the front setback requirement, so we discussed, you know, maybe the circumstance in this case, that it doesn't meet the 10-foot front yard setback requirement, they would be, you know, now allowed to do an addition off of this structure, but it would have to meet the current 10-foot setback. And so, we had discussed last time, maybe allowing that through a conditional use permit in order for, to allow for the opportunity for the neighbors to weigh in on, maybe, you know, maybe it's a special circumstance that fits in with the neighborhood better, if it's right up against the street. And so, that's what I've tried to do here, is, you know, added this section at the end of number one, saying that no non-conforming structure may be enlarged or altered in any manner, which increases its non-conformity, and then accept as provided in this recitation, which refers you to subsection four. So, that, that states the non-conforming structure may be enlarged or altered with the same zoning non-conformities through the issuance of a conditional use permit. However, the enlargement or alteration may not exceed 50% of the floor or the existing structure. So, you know, what, what I was thinking there was, we have a zone that you have a setback requirement, any new structure is required to meet that setback requirement, they can't go, right now, they can't go through a conditional use permit in order to get a reduction in the setbacks, they have to meet the 10-foot setback, unless they have, you know, like we had, had approved before, the alternate front yard setback, so, you know, you can average, maybe there's a structure here, and there's a structure here on the other side, you could take that average, and that's automatically your front yard setback. So, I was just trying to reconcile allowing an existing structure to go through a conditional use permit, to allow the, the expansion of that structure with the same zoning non-conformity setback, you know, just allowing that free rein, maybe they do a 10,000 square foot addition, and it goes out all the way over here, right up to the property line, you know, I was trying to, to put some type of percentage on there, just so it, it wouldn't be viewed as, you know, just because you have a non-conforming structure, it does meet that setback, you're entitled to go through the conditional use permit in order to get that waived for whatever addition you do, but somebody that wants to build new has to meet the setback requirement. So, you know, when we talked about it, we thought we'd maybe propose, you know, putting a 50% limit on that, in order to allow some addition to the structure, so, you know, 50% of this area would be, you know, half of the structure, being able to essentially, you know, put half of the structure on an addition that could meet the, or wouldn't have to meet the 10-foot setback if you went through the conditional use permit process, so.
Did you say would have to, or would not?
Would have to, if they went through the conditional use permit process, and it got approved. So, that, you know, that was, just as we, you know, thought about that in our heads, was just the fact of equity and, and allowing an existing structure the ability to go through that and get it, that setback down to, you know, practically nothing, whereas if you built new, then you'd have to meet the 10-foot setback. And so, we thought that, you know, maybe you should put a 50% or some type of percentage that, you know, allows some type of addition meeting, or not meeting that setback through the, the CUP, but still allows that to, to be able to happen.
Mike, there are other types of non-conformities than just setback. How does this phrase relate to other types?
Well, you usually have, yeah, I mean, it's usually-
I was thinking of parking, and-
Those are the, the big ones. Non-conforming structure, so it has to be associated with a structure.
Okay.
So, we usually think about, it's usually setbacks and building height are, are really the only, I mean, we have the other sections that talk about uses in structures, which would address the duplex and the single-family zone. Here, we're just talking about structures, so it's usually just setbacks and building height are really the only non-conformities of a structure.
So, if you had a four-story building, but the height limit was 35 feet or something, and you could add 50% of the existing building's floor area at that height, but then beyond that, anything else you did would have to go down to the height limit, as an example?
Correct. So, this would maybe allow in some, you know, maybe our Fort Russell, or some of the older areas of town, when you have higher pitched roofs, and maybe it exceeds the 35-foot height limitation, this would allow, you know, additions to those building, structures, that would, you'd be able to go through a conditional use permit process and achieve it that way, whereas right now, you would have to, you know, you'd be faced with a variance process, which is pretty tough to, to come by, or have one approved.
And I, I can say professionally, I've run into that issue, and, and with historic buildings where the height was over 35 feet, and so, I, so it is an issue, yeah.
If in a circumstance like this, the 50% of the floor area ate up a lot of the parking, they'd still have to meet the parking requirement, right?
Yeah, you can't, just because you have a non-conformity, you can't create another non-conformity with something you do. So, yeah, they would, regardless, they would have to meet the parking requirements.
Okay. So, if that may, you could only do 30%, then that's tough, you just have to do 30% then, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I wonder if you want to do 60%, I mean, what is that going to do to you? Does that just throw everything up in the air then, or?
Well, I mean, it, it would allow you to do the 60% addition, it's just that 50% of that could, could, would have to meet the, you know, or could be exempt from the height.
That, that other 10% is going to have to be setbacked?
So, maybe you did a, yeah, a, a addition that was 60% of the structure, well, 50% of that could follow the same roof line for the building height, but then the, you know, maybe you drop down the other 10% off the back, you're still able to do the addition, you just have to, you're only able to do the 50% at that current building height.
I was talking more on the setbacks. If you had a big piece of land with a little bitty non-conforming, like you got there, just a little bit bigger land, and they wanted to make a, a lot bigger, they can't, they have to stop at 50%, right? So, you're going to have a building like this, and then the rest of it's going to be setback?
Potentially, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it, it all comes down to scale, I mean, this one, you have a really small building on a big lot.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you had a building that went all the way out here, maybe covered this area, 50% is going to be a lot, but just because of the small size of the building, you know, maybe that's not going to help them that much.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
So, that means you would have to have the setback on that addition then, right?
Yeah, I mean, you-
For most of it.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you, you know, decided to do 50% and did an addition, and you could go right up to the property line with that, and then whatever addition back here would have to meet the 10-foot setback, so.
And you'd have to get a CUP for the addition.
You have to get a, a CUP for the addition that's within the setback, yeah. But it still gives you the opportunity of going through that process and having the neighborhood weigh in, maybe it's a detriment that we can't see, or, you know, maybe something comes up at the public hearing where, you know, there, there's some type of issue, so.
Well, you can see, one issue might be the faces of the zoning district, you know, there might be a residential face and a commercial face. I mean, it looks to me, just looking, and so there would be a different, differing impact on the scale of the surrounding, you know, uses.
Mike, was the 50% kind of an arbitrary number, or?
Yeah, it is.
And was there something that put this in motion, the reason we're doing this, or just arbitrary, again, just in case it happens? Just curious on my part. I didn't know if someone come up and needed something like this done, and-
For the, for this?
Yeah, for like 50% of it, or wanting to build.
Or for the whole code?
Yeah, the whole code.
For the whole code? Well, it was something that's always been, you know, this is actual, you know, an actual issue here, is that we were approached at one point in time as to, you know, possibly doing an addition. You know, right now, this is, you know, they expressed that they would, they could meet the 10-foot setback, that wouldn't be an issue. What really was the issue was that, you know, this section that we have that discusses, you know, the way it currently reads, it would appear that you would able, you're able to do an addition, as long as it meets current setbacks, doesn't create any more nonconformities than already exist. But then you get to this repairs and maintenance section, that discusses that the volume of the structure existed when it became nonconforming, should not be increased. So you have a little bit of conflict in the code, and that would say that, you know, maybe that it shouldn't be allowed to be increased through an addition. And so that was one of the major issues that we were trying to address. The other one was just the nonconforming use within a zone, so the duplex within a single-family zone, and then the financing that comes along with that.
And ability to replace it.
Inability to replace it if it gets destroyed or burns down.
So that follows up with a question that somebody posed at the last meeting that was in the minutes, and I apologize, I don't remember who posed it, but that, should we run this past some lenders to see if it accomplishes what we're trying to accomplish, which is the ability for, if in the case of a total loss, for somebody to get the, you know, the ability to rebuild?
Yeah, and I've talked to a couple appraisers, as well as lenders, and they said that, yeah, that the issue is that if it ever burns down, gets destroyed, then it can't be rebuilt. So that would solve that issue for them.
This ordinance is adequate, the way it's worded.
Yeah.
And I think that was the initial motivation for this whole thing, from what I-
Yeah, I mean, it was something that needed to be addressed.
Right.
You know, it never really was an issue prior to 2008, and then it rarely became an issue after that. We never used to get calls from lending institutions, asking if, you know, it could be burnt down, or if it could be rebuilt if it burns down. And so-
For exam-
Probably something that should have been addressed a few years ago, but-
Well, we have quite a few duplexes in single-family zones. For example, if they burn down, then people can't rebuild their duplex that might have been there 100 years, I mean, as an example.
Yeah.
So it seems like this, this could increase nonconforming uses, I mean, with additions and things like that. You know, just like you're saying, if you did the 50% addition on that building up there, you're having more nonconforming use there. Do you think that's going to be any significant amount? Is it a rare enough circumstance?
Well, we're still going to restrict the uses. So the uses aren't allowed to expand.
Or the nonconforming structure.
It's just the structures. So the ones that, you know, this is assuming that the use that's within them isn't allowed to use in the zone, it's just that they may not meet the building height or the setback requirements. So this would just address those, you know, in the circumstances of the nonconforming uses and structures in combination, those are still going to be really restricted, you know. I mean, it's just, we're going to say that they're going to be able to be rebuilt if they're going to, you know, destroyed at no fault of the owner. So, you know, that's the big one, is just that they're able to be rebuilt. But, you know, a lot of other jurisdictions really restrict these nonconforming uses, and that's really about the only flexibility they give, is if they burn down, they can be replaced.
Can be rebuilt.
They usually don't allow any type of, you know, addition, or, you know, expansion of the uses, just because they're nonconforming uses in a zone that doesn't allow them. So they're really restricted there. It's just that we would clear up the issue with the financing and lending on these, and-
Well, let me try to rephrase it. It seems like this can, this could lead to more nonconforming structure. You know, like I say, if you did, if you did the addition onto that, the example building, a 50% addition, where you get to, you get to not be held to the setback.
Well-
I understand. And then the question is, is that, is that, you know, what's your take on whether or not that could happen enough that it's a problem?
Well, you know, it would lead to not more nonconforming structures, but more of the nonconforming structure, you know, more of it.
Yeah.
You know, and I think in these circumstances, that, you know, you deal with a lot of newer subdivisions, which meet all the requirements, but you have older sections of town that were built under different rules, and we've since changed those. And I think that we probably need to do, you know, have some flexibility in order for people to be able to, you know, be able to use their property the way other people in newer subdivisions use their property, that maybe have a little bit more area. And so, you know, in this circumstance, I think that it would, you know, we don't see too many of these. Usually our side setbacks have been the same throughout time. There are usually five and 10 on the other side, you know, a combination of 15. So those aren't really an issue. Front setbacks are rarely an issue in residential areas anymore, because we changed it maybe five, six years ago, where you measure from the back edge of the sidewalk, if it's a local street. You know, we have these areas of town, which have 80-foot rightaways, maybe the front property lines, five, 10 feet away from the front, front of the house. And so we've changed that, so we rarely, very rarely ever run into that problem. Plus the alternate front yard setback, which we take the average of the two houses on either side. And then the one we worked on a couple of years ago, with the motor business block, that says that, you know, if, I think it's 60% of the block is nonconforming setbacks, then you're able to use that, you know, maybe the, your two on either side are setback with you, but 60% are up there, you know, at that setback. And so we've got quite a few options for the front setback. Sides aren't usually a problem, and the rear's been 20 for a long time, too. So we don't run into too many of these, but the ones we do are odd circumstances, which, you know, maybe warrant a variance, but it's a lot easier to run people through a conditional use permit than a variance, because, just because of, you know, the threshold for variances is such that a lot, most of them shouldn't be approved unless you have a stream running through the middle of your property, and you need to push it all the way up to the front of the street. So I, you know, and then the circumstances of historic neighborhoods, a lot of those building, you know, pit, with steep pitched roofs, are probably over 30, 35 feet of what the current zone is. So, you know, maybe I'm biased, being on the historic preservation, but I think that's going to help.
Generally, you want to match the roof slope and not put a low-slope roof next to a steep Tudor or something.
So it kind of sounds like you think this is going to be rare enough, and that the flexibility is worth it?
Yeah, we don't get them very often.
Yeah.
But the ones we do seem to make sense in my mind.
Okay. I really like, I really like this. I think this is a big improvement on the last one we looked at. The one thing that gives me pause is the 50%. If, if you have a, you get the situation with that building that goes, on the corner that goes up to the property line of the roofs, that exceed the 30, 35 feet. I'm having trouble conceiving of the situation where allowing even a, you know, that building on the corner to take up much more of the lot, even more than 50%, continuing with that, that nonconforming setback would be, would be a problem. Is, we change the zoning code over time, because the aesthetics change, and neighborhood uses, as they expand, might change somewhat. But what's there, isn't, expanding that isn't going to make, I can't see that would make a whole lot of difference. And if you have somebody who wants to build their roof up to match the whole thing, I'm not sure why that should be limited to 50, 50%. And it might be the kind of thing where it doesn't come up very much, but seems to me it'd be better to allow the alteration consistent with the current use, without, without limiting it to a certain percentage.
By that, do you mean, if you're adding on to it, then observe the setbacks, and make it more than 50%, but you're going to go back and-
No, I, well, for example, the building on the corner, if they wanted to make that take up a whole half of the block, I don't see a point in limiting that to 50% with, it cannot have, it doesn't have to have the setback, the rest does. I don't see a problem with having the whole thing right up to the property line, given that what's there now is right up to the property line.
Certainly changes, though, the way it would feel to be in that neighborhood.
Well, that's what I wonder. That's what I wonder, if it really would, given that it's there up to the property line right now.
Well, what would happen, too, if, okay, so if this is what we pass, and I'm the guy that owns the building, and I expand at 50%, and a few years down the road, nobody's paid attention that I did that in the past, and I asked to do it again, and then I asked to do it again, do we have a mechanism for keeping the 50% from perpetuating itself until the entire thing is covered and building?
Yeah, we have records of all conditional use permits-
And we look at those, right?
-that have ever been approved.
That maybe is a dumb question, but-
We got an Excel database that has all those lists.
So if we went to more of an open-ended percentage, meaning you could even maybe go up to 100% of that block, if you owned the whole block, is the fact that they have to apply for a conditional use permit sufficient as a check on any objections within the neighborhood? When I look at the site we've been looking at, the heaviest development is on the residential end. The other end is pretty much no man's land, commercial, not very well-defined, and actually would improve the block, you know, just looking at it from the air, at the aerial. So I guess I'm wondering if, if they're going to have to apply for a conditional use permit anyway, should we, should we name a percentage at all for additions? Or we just say they put forward a proposal, we, you know, just, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I mean-
That's kind of what I was thinking. I mean, why are we even making this a rule for them? Why don't we just take each individual case as it comes to us, instead of just allowing an automatic 50% if you have a nonconforming building?
Okay.
I mean, I'm just-
Yeah, you certainly have that ability. I mean, I was just trying to reconcile the, you know, you don't have a, you're building from scratch, and you got to meet the setback, but hey, somebody has a building, and all of a sudden, they can expand on the entire lot with no setback, just because they have a small building that doesn't have a setback right now.
Why not make them have a setback on the new part? If it were a setback, that there was a question, why not make them have a setback for the new part?
Yeah, see, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. Why, why are we even, I mean, I can see why they would want that, but, and like I said, take that as an individual case, and bring it upon us, and let the surrounding areas talk about it, but I just don't see why we're putting a rule in there, so everybody can, it appears they can automatically have that.
Well, part of this dilemma, for the thing that we're looking at, the little project, it's so close to the highway, that it's hard to even talk about that project. If this little building was right in the middle of a residential area, surrounded by residential, wonderful, we might look at it in a different way. It's so close to the highway, you would think you'd want to pay the guy to build a big building on there, to make something happen. In other words, so I'm just not sure. It's an interesting example, but I don't know if it's, if it's a, I keep trying to think of other buildings that I've known, because with the highway running so close here, it's a long, it's going to be a long, long day before somebody buys that piece of property and wants to put a beautiful home there on the highway, you know? So we're in a kind of an unusual case, because you'd think that lot would become more business-like in, if you just looked at it.
Well, if that building were flipped, and if it were on the highway side, and they wanted to expand to the north in it, then they're getting towards residential areas, and then the setback becomes more important, and it also matches what's across the street more. So it seems like every, I guess my question really was based on the fact that every circumstance is different, and so then it starts to be conditional use permits, or kind of provide that umbrella for consideration. Because what if a building downtown were, you know, an historic building that is over the height limit, and, you know, to make sense for a sensitive addition, you want it to match that setback, you don't want it, you know, I can think of other circumstances where it would make sense to allow 50% or 100% of the coverage of the lot, so. I don't know where this leaves us, but-
I think that, I think that section four is just taking out that second sentence. And so that if somebody wanted to enlarge or alter a nonconformity, they'd have to go through the conditional use permit process, which would allow all those kind of things to be addressed. I think one of the things in the conditional use permit approval standards are, changes the character of the neighborhood, right?
Sure.
So you could go in-
People could come out in force and say, we don't want this.
Yeah, the neighborhood side might say, well, yeah, without the setback, that changes the character of the neighborhood on the commercial side, and no, it doesn't change it at all, that would improve it.
Good. I like that. Good.
Providing more flexibility.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have a tendency, we, I think the generic planning world would loves these little 5%, 10%, 50%, because, boy, you can measure it, and that gives you something to hang your hat on. If you have to just think about the condition and see how it's going to go, then it's probably smarter to do it that way, but it forces, puts you in a position of being more subjective, I suppose. And so I think the reason we, in the planning world, go to these percentages that don't often make a lot of sense, is because, duh, it becomes a kind of a little of-
Well, it clarifies the, it leaves things in a more firm, you know, position. So when people come in and want to develop, they know, well, I've got 50%, and that's it, and I can't go anywhere.
But the 50% was-
I don't see the 50% here.
Right, exactly. No, I agree with you.
It's no different than the 5 or 10 that we were talking about before. Those are arbitrarily enough, because if you're going to change the nature of the neighborhood, and change the whole feeling of the thing, that's one deal, but whether the percentages work or not is really-
Well, the fact that there's the conditional use permit process starts to bring a discussion to the table, and it gives us flexibility, so. So do, what would you like us to do with this, right now?
Well, you get out of all that. I'd like to say that I'm not married to that at all.
Okay, I don't mean this specifically.
The subjectivity falls on the board of adjustment, so, I mean, I, my hands are clean.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Ours are due, so we can just pass it.
Yeah, I'm fine with eliminating it. But, so, yeah, if this looks good to everybody, we can just eliminate the last sentence on number four, as long as everything else looks all right, and then we can move forward with this.
So do you need a motion for us to approve this, or to have you develop it in its final form and bring it back to us, or where are we? That's one of my questions.
Well, you know, I think it's going to be that second meeting in October, by the time we have a public hearing, because we can't meet, you know, we can't notice it and have a public hearing at our next meeting in September. So, and then we're not meeting on the 12th. So we could look at it one more time at our next meeting, I'll make that change, and then the September, the second September meeting, we can look at it one more time, and then if everything looks good, I'll schedule it for a public hearing at the second meeting in October.
Okay.
And we can go through there.
Does that sound good to everybody?
Great.
All right, so-
Thanks very much, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think it, I think it's a major improvement.
Yeah.
And it certainly helps people who are stuck with properties that are nonconforming, to clarify their longevity and circumstances, so. Okay, so we don't, we have come to the end of our agenda of anything that actually- end of our agenda of anything that actually was going to happen tonight that didn't get canceled. So that, just, just a reminder that we will meet one more time in September on the 28th, and then we will meet, we will not meet on the 12th of October, but we will meet on the 26th of October. And we'll have Les McDonald come on November 9th, and I imagine we won't meet on November 23rd because it's the day before Thanksgiving. So there'll be one meeting in November, and I don't know about December, we'll meet on the 14th, but the other one is...
Usually canceled, too.
Usually canceled as well. So that hopefully gives everybody a sense of what the schedule is. Okay. And do you reading? So you have good questions for Les, because I think it's a really important issue. It's really one of the opportunities for planning, you know, in our zoning planning kind of end of our commission.
It's got great maps, too. I just, it's a really excellent document. You get a lot of information.
Great. All right. I guess I don't have to ask for anything, so meeting adjourned.